Superintendent Melton Timmons is here tonight. We got a lot to talk about in a short amount of time, we gonna get it in. But first, let me play this disclaimer, I need you to like and share. Where's all the Texans at? The Texans? The Tex- yeah! Ha! The Texans! Where the Texans at tonight? We got a lot to talk about, y'all. Let's get in. Superintendent Melton Timmons, the Vice Chairman of the National Board of Trustees. And he's running for reelection. Let's kick it off with this message first. Hello, Brother Steve. I want to share this disclaimer with you upfront. The views and opinions of my broadcast are not necessarily of Brother Steve Harris or the people I interview on this broadcast. This broadcast is independently produced by myself, Brother Steve Harris, and is not an official broadcast of the Church of God in Christ. I do not serve in any capacity in the Church of God in Christ for this particular broadcast and interviews of candidates at this particular time. I'm celebrating 40 years in the entertainment and broadcast industry, and we do our very best to continue to operate in integrity in all that we do and that we say. If you go to our website, you'll see these websites. There's a disclaimer on our website that shares with everyone that it is not an official website of the Church of God in Christ. I basically share information as a journalist to give people an opportunity to be heard, seen, and viewed. Hope that you enjoyed our broadcast. Hope that it's a blessing to you and it blesses others in all that we do and say. God bless you. Well, it's time to like and share. Time to like and share. I'm opening the comments up right now. For those who want to give a comment, you can put your name and your comment in the comment box right there. And we're gonna let Superintendent Melton Timmons see all the wonderful people that's commenting out there on tonight, alright? Let's get this broadcast cranked up, cranked off. Brother Steve TV from Hollywood, California.
From Hollywood.
Yo DJ!
Are you done mixing yet?
Your DJ has only just begun.
Hello, I'm Bishop TD Jakes, and you're watching Brother Steve TV.
Hey, it's Latoya Luckin', and you're watching Brother Steve TV.
This is Rans Allen, and you're watching my friend, Brother Steve TV.
Hey, y'all, this is Landry Johnson, and you're watching Brother Steve TV.
Hi.
This is Rodney Dogg, child jerking.
This is Chris Tucker.
This is Kurt Franklin.
And you are watching Brother Steve.
You're watching Brother Steve.
Brother Steve TV.
Speak soon.
From Hollywood, California, you're watching Brother Steve TV.
It's a praise jam party, yup, it's going up. Brother Steve, the sunshine bear, that's what's up. Him and his crew, they really make his stations nervous. Brother Steve deliver hits like the postal service. Must I remind you of his credentials? Brother Steve go hard, he go large, he's monumental. That's it, it's over, a finality. Call the Paul Berry, his station's buried in Cali. 360, going hard for the Lord, it's the praise jam party. Brother Steve is in charge. For all the hot exclusives and the brand new styles, tune in every week, adjust your radio dial. To the most unpredictable show on the airwaves, from the land of the stars to the home of the breaks. We go hard for the Lord. It's how we repose, we don't apologize for it. We go hard.
Superintendent Melton Timmons with me tonight. Let's go live. Superintendent Trustee, Vice President, how you doing tonight?
Man, I'm doing great. I, you know, I, I almost think I made it. I've made it to the Brother Steve Harris. I think, I almost think I made it.
He almost thought he made it. Never could have, almost thought I made it. Superintendent Timmons, you making things happen. You are one of the hardest working men in the Church of God in Christ. People love you. You're one of the rare persons that I've not heard nothing bad about. I mean, everybody loved Superintendent Timmons. Maybe I need to come to Texas to walk around the neighborhood or just...
You know, we, we believe the Bible, you know, and it tells us to beware when all men, when me, all men speak well of you. So I'm just, I don't know, I'm sitting on the edge now. I don't know, I don't know.
Jones Valley, Kojic, where you at? They say they here, and we gonna crank it up, and we gonna go right into it, Superintendent. I'm gonna play your video in just a moment. But what term is this, will this be for you, for this reelection?
I'm seeking my third term for reelection. I've served two already, and I'm seeking my third term.
What are some of the things that you do? There's several trustees, we know they handle the budget, different things. I know you have a specific title, not just the Vice Chairman, the First Vice Chairman of the Trustee Board. What are some of the things that you do that you want to share with our constituents out there?
Okay, so I represent the Trustee Board as the Superintendent of National Properties, which means that I oversee all of the properties that are owned by the Church of God in Christ, in particular, the Mason Temple Campus. And of course, all of the other things that go along with trustees. I do still work with the budget. I work with members of the Trustee Board in, in various capacities that they serve, all related to the national properties. And so, I'm excited about that. I get the opportunity to make sure that our properties are up to par, that they are all insured, that our employees are safe, and, and all of that good stuff that go along with national properties.
So I want to mention this to the people out there watching our broadcast. You live in Texas, but you are constantly on your duty in Memphis. And they're gonna see that in this video, but you're constantly there in Memphis.
Yeah, about, about twice a month, I, I go to Memphis and stay anywhere from three to five days because I think you have to be there in order to make sure that the job is being done. And we have an excellent staff on national properties, though the security people, the maintenance people, the administrative assistant, Ms. Clayton, who's been there forever, who really, who really, really run the national properties. But I get to take all the credit for it. But they do a, an exceptional job, those people on the campus. But I do go there because I think a part of my responsibility requires that I be there. And so I go there at least twice a month.
As the First Vice Chairman, what do people look for from you? What are you, what are you hearing? You've been on the road on the campaign trail the last couple of months. What are you hearing from what the people want, what they're looking for?
I think the people won't, want me to continue being who I am. Because let me tell you, Brother Steve, it's difficult when people try to be somebody else. And people know me to be honest. They know me to be a man of integrity. They know me to be a person who says what they mean and mean what they say. They know me a person that's not afraid to stand up for what is right and to make the hard, tough decisions. And I've been able to do that, and I think people expect for me to continue to do that. I think that may be one of the reasons why they have continued to elect me to the National Board of Trustees.
Have you been in a position where you had to make a hard decision, where some of the other trustees did not agree with you?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That has happened from time to time. You know, like any other board, we have 15 people, and so sometimes 15 different opinions. And we all listen to each other's opinion. And at the end of the day, I believe that the board comes out and, and makes the right decision. And sometimes, there've been times where we had to really talk about it and really talk about it, and take a break and come back and talk about it, take another break and come back and talk about it. But ultimately, I believe that this board has always reached the decision that was best for the Church of God in Christ.
Tell us about your church, so they'll know you're the pastor of one of the greatest churches in the Church of God in Christ, and your jurisdiction as well.
Well, I like to tell people that the Jones Valley Community Church of God in Christ is the smallest mega-church that you will ever find. I like to tell people, you know, I'm, I'm just a little country boy down here in Texas in, in the country, but God has blessed our church. We survived through the pandemic, have a wonderful group of people, the best members you, you will ever find, the best workers. And we have people who work in that church who do things to make me look good. And again, now, they're doing it, but I promise you, I'm gonna take the credit for it. God has been kind to us, and you know, we just do what we do. We, we like churching, we like to have church. We like to give God our all, and we do it to the best of our ability. We do certain things, we do out in our community. Programs that we have each year that we reach out to the community. We just had one not too long ago where we did free haircuts leading up to school, gave backpacks, give out food. We have the, the clothes giveaway, which is a, a big project that we have every year. My wife heads that, Laquita heads that program up. And it, it's just wonderful because we reach out to the community. And, and then we have, in Texas, you can adopt a highway. And so, our church is, is probably, I know it's the only Church of God in Christ in East Texas that has adopted a highway. We may be the only African-American church in the city, but every so often, we go out and take the crew and we clean up that highway. And when you riding around the loop, you see the sign that says that this area is, is cleaned by Jones Valley Community Church of God in Christ. So it's another way of advertising for us. But we do those things, and, and we're excited to reach out into our community.
You've already listed what you did in your community. You listed some of the great programs that you've already done in the community. And I think this is one of the first times, besides my wife's Facebook, to see my picture on somebody else's Facebook page just because of you. So that's a joy. Thank you, Laquita Timmons. We appreciate you. We appreciate you so very much. You know, Superintendent, what are some of the things that you can say has been some of your prized accomplishments on the Board of Trustees that, that you can legitimately talk about? We don't want to say any personal, private trustee business, but something that you can say, this is one of the accomplishments that you brought to the table.
So, our board, the present board that we have now is a team. And I take pride in the fact that we are a team. And as you know, when the pandemic came, it was a very difficult time for the church and for people in general. And one of the things that, that I like to remind people about is how the trustees and, and me being a part of that came together after the General Assembly had passed the $10 million budget for us to operate on. And then, of course, the pandemic just came out of nowhere. It was short, we were not having conventions, we were not really having church. And so we were tasked with operating the church on half of that, which was a $5 million budget. At that time, Turner Amos Smith was our Budget Chair, and he kind of guided us with the direction of our Chairman, Bishop Wallace, directed us into providing that budget. And what we like to remind people of, even though we were operating off of half of the money, we had to make some difficult cuts, cuts in travel and some other things. But what we take pride in, we never cut jobs. None of our employees were laid off. None of our employees lost their jobs. None of our employees lost their benefits. And I take pride in that because even though the pandemic hit, we had working families who still had mortgages, who still had daycare bills, who still had food bills, who still had bills that they had to pay. And we were able to navigate that budget so that those people would not lose. When, as the Superintendent of National Properties, I was able to, under the direction of our Presiding Bishop, Bishop J. Drew Sheard, who stepped in and helped the church a lot with the "I Love My Church" campaign. But we were able to do massive renovations on the Mason Campus. And that's something that you can go and see. If you remember the iron fence that, that was put around there, we redid that, repainted it, put a fresh coat of black paint and gold knobs at the top to, to make it look better. On the inside, we redid the carpet for the first time, I understand, in the history of the church, to re-carpet the entire Mason Sanctuary. We redid those bathrooms downstairs, the main restrooms. As you come into the front of Mason Temple, we refurbished and, and redid the kitchen area, opened it back up again so that it would, it could be used. And then we've done some renovations to some of the buildings there. All of those things were done under my leadership as Superintendent of National Properties. And so those are things that, that I like to talk about and things that... And listen, I want to tell you, Brother Steve, there's a lot of other stuff I need to complete. I need to complete. I need to go back to the board so I can complete the work that God has assigned for me to do.
There's a lot of things that you do, and I want to let people know, if you want to re-watch this interview later on, you will be able to go to kojicelections.com. That's kojicelections.com. Matter of fact, if you go there, as soon as this interview's over, put your name and email there. That's the site that I operate, and you can see this interview again within 24 to 48 hours. And then we're gonna be blessing about 100 people with some $300 certificates so they can go get food for dining at restaurants and some healthcare needs as well. So make sure your name's on that, on that email list to go to kojicelections.com, get that information. And all our YouTube family, if you watch us on YouTube, would you please subscribe? Like, share, and subscribe right now, Superintendent Timmons. I'm very glad to say, as of like last night, I'm at 2.2 million views on our YouTube channel, and this interview's gonna add to that. So please subscribe to this word about what you're doing. What are some of the things that you have in the future that you'd like to accomplish, that you can talk about as on the Trustee Board?
Well, as, as I said, I'm very interested in the, in the Mason Campus because it's our Mecca, it's our home. And there are some things that we need to, we need to finish, we need to complete. We have some property in the downtown area that Mother Sandra Jones, her committee has put together, and they're working on. I'd like to see some of those projects completed because they will be revenue streams. We can get those up to par. So, you know, Mason Temple is an old building, and so it needs a lot of work. And I certainly want to see to it that we can get back in there and finish the work that we've started in renovating the Mason Temple Campus. And then, of course, you know, I take pride in Mason Temple, Brother Steve, because I go back to when I was a little boy, walking around on the campus of Mason Temple. We would say a barbecue and fried chicken and stuff and money so our young people could go to Memphis for the weekend, for the weekend, for the weekend. We didn't stay in hotels at that time. They had projects across from Mason Temple, and we stayed in the homes of families. And I remember as a kid, I would walk around that entire Mason Campus, and I was amazed at looking at the license plates of vehicles there. And I would look, oh, that car's from North Carolina, that car's from California. I was amazed. And now, God has allowed me to come full circle, and now I'm in charge of the area where I used to walk. I have a parking place at the place where I used to be amazed at seeing other people. And so I, I take pride in, in Mason Temple. You know, everybody who knows me knows that I love the Church of God in Christ. There's nothing, absolutely nothing I wouldn't do for the Church of God in Christ because I believe it's God's church.
I'm gonna play your video in just a few moments, but I'm trying to see the right way to say this without offending you or offending any of the members of the Jones Valley. But we kind of mentioned your name on our broadcast last night with Bishop Dickerson Wells. And Bishop Wells said he can cook black-eyed peas and oxtails. Now, we wondering what can Superintendent Timmons in that old country, down home, Texas, what he putting together out there on the grill?
Let me tell you, I have a wonderful mother-in-law. Listen, let me tell you, Tom. My mother-in-law can cook anything. She's 91 years old, and listen, she can cook anything. Now, I make the best pecan pie that you have ever tasted. Man, when I, when, when I, I haven't done one in a while, but when I've done them, they be fighting over them, darling. They be fighting over my southern pecan pie.
So, so are you, are you saying you're gonna challenge me? Or you're gonna bring me in a slice of pecan pie, possibly the conversation, or?
Possibly. Brother Steve, that is a possibility. That is a possibility. Now, you got to be ready because it's so good, it'll make you slap your daughter.
What?
So if you don't want to slap your daughter, I don't know if you need any of my pecan.
I need that little pecan pie because I may get slapped back, you know, before my head go.
Now, Bishop Dickerson Wells, you know, I haven't tasted any of his foods. I don't know yet, but we not gonna talk about that grill. And please, whatever you do, don't ask any members of my church about me grilling. Don't, just don't do that. Just stick with it.
Because I, I don't have to, because in about nine seconds, they're gonna post in the comments about you in that grill. Matter of fact, it didn't take nine seconds, it took two seconds. So Jones Valley and Pastor in that grill, you can post it up there right now, right now, right now, right now. Oh, Sister Tina? Sister Tina?
She said, "Next question, please."
Oh, no, they said lighter fluid.
You want me to tell you the story about the lighter fluid, Brother Steve?
Because they, they going off right now, what happened?
I call myself grilling, and I thought that the fire was supposed to stay lit and, and blaze, and all the time, every time it went out, I put more lighter fluid on it. And they bit into that meat, I'll make the taste with light.
Oh, God.
They won't, my, my church members, they won't even let me grill anymore. They, they won't let me.
Oh, Lord. Oh, my mama just commented. Don't try to stab your mama, you'll get slapped. Oh, my God. Superintendent, you know, we, 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 we cut right to the chase with you. You, you, you get the facts, you make it happen. That's why my mother Freeman cook. In just a few moments, I'm gonna play the video presentation, and then I want you to come on and talk to the delegates about what you want to say. Your work is pretty evident. You've been on the Trustee Board, but you don't take nothing lightly. And you know what I will say? You have been consistent. You always shake everybody's hands. You always talk to everybody. You don't wait till election year, you talk to everybody throughout the whole year, after year, year after that, and year after that. So you, 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 your work speaks for itself, and you trust it, you try, you true, you get the job done. So I want to play this video presentation, and we're gonna come back and allow you to talk to the delegates directly and share anything you want to share. We'll be right back, right after this presentation, and from Superintendent Timmons, and you can hear his heart as you watch this video presentation. Greetings, I'm that country preacher from Glade Water, Texas. Superintendent Melton R. Timmons, a candidate for reelection to the National Board of Trustees of the Church of God in Christ. Oh, how I love my church. Raised and born again from a tot playing the tambourine in a special chair during the service to a leader in the Sunshine Band purity class and youth department. As a child, often called the little preacher. On Mother's Day 45 years ago, I preached my official first message. I grew up with the prayers of my big mama, as she always ended her prayer with, "Lord, give him favor with the people." God has certainly honored that prayer and opened many doors and granted me opportunities to serve God's people. My passion is following leadership, and God placed me with some of the greatest leaders to serve. Thank you for the confidence you, the delegates of the Church of God in Christ, have shown me. I so appreciate your support and your vote granting me to serve on the National Board of Trustees for 12 years. It is my prayer that my actions and my lifestyle have been of such that you will not have to hang your head in shame and regret the vote of trust that you placed in me. For 2024, I'm ready to continue the work, and I'm asking you to vote for me again because there is work to do. When elected in 2012, I served as the Assistant Secretary to the Board, and in 2013, I was elected Secretary to the Board, maintaining transparency in financial matters and providing clear reports to the General Assembly. In 2021, I was elected to my current position as First Vice Chairman of the Board, collaborating with our chairman, Presiding Bishop, and the great leaders of our church to resolve issues, create innovative processes, and overseeing responsible financial planning and spending that aligns with our church's mission. Since 2019, I've represented the trustee board as the Superintendent of National Properties. In that role, I've worked with the leadership of our church in the renovation of Mason Temple, including the installation of new carpet in the sanctuary, updating the restrooms to meet current building codes and standards, renovating the Mason Temple kitchen and reopening the cafeteria, and restoring the Mason tomb area and the office. Working with the Presiding Bishop and the governmental liaison to help secure millions of dollars for projects on the Lexington campus, working with the Presiding Bishop and Chief Operating Officer in increasing the employee's minimum wage and benefits, and overseeing the upkeep and development of all buildings and grounds, ensuring they are safe and welcoming for all. In the Church of God in Christ, there is work to do and experience matters. Experience is an invaluable asset that cannot be replicated or accelerated. Experience requires time, patience, and a willingness to learn. Experience is the invisible force that guides our decisions, shapes our perspectives, and ultimately defines who we become. I have the experience and I'm already doing the work. I humbly ask for your support and your vote to re-elect me to the National Board of Trustees again. I am Superintendent Melton R. Timmons. Joyce Rogers, brother. One of the greatest evangelists of all times, Lady Joyce Rogers. You're her, you, you were her little brother or big brother?
I'm her younger brother.
Younger. Boy, I tell you, I, I, I may have to play that video with me and Joyce and Dorinda again. That joker made me holler during the pen, Joyce in that phone, just her in that phone. Just, y'all were just, y'all are just down home, good folks. Good folks.
Our big mama prayed for us years ago and told the Lord to give us favor with the people. And let me tell you, God has certainly honored our big mama request because he, he really gave, he has given us favor with his people. And we're grateful. Thank you.
You know, I'm about to give you the floor and your video, thank you, Lady Crystal. Your video said it all. It, it, you laid out the facts, you laid out the information. You've got more things to do and more things to get done. And we believe the people are with you with that vision because you work with everybody as a team player. But on this show tonight, I'm going to take the credit for the good broadcast.
Ain't nobody electric, Brother Steve. I mean, we have that all over the church.
We just grateful, we're grateful. Superintendent, I'm going to give you the floor at this time. And you can talk to the delegates one-on-one. And I'm going to come back after your presentation to the delegate.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much, Brother Steve. And let me just take a moment and thank all of you who have joined us tonight from, oh, it looks like from all over the country, from Texas, from everywhere. I just want to thank you and appreciate you for joining us tonight. Listen, the Church of God in Christ is at a crucial time in the life of our church. And, uh, we need people to work for our church and to serve our church who, number one, who have the church at heart. I want to tell you, I have the Church of God in Christ at heart. I want everything that is best for the Church of God in Christ. And so I solicit you who are delegates to remember me as you have done the last two terms. Uh, uh, let me just take a minute and thank you for the votes that you have given me in the past. And I pray, my prayer is that I have lived in such a way, I have acted in such a way, and I have served in such a way that you don't have to hang your head down in regret that you've given me your vote. I hope that my actions have been as such where you will be happy to vote for me again. As I've said earlier, there's a lot of work that needs to be done in the Mason campus and even down in Lexington. We don't talk a lot about Lexington. But the Church of God in Christ is the largest landowner in Holmes County, Mississippi. We have hundreds of acres of land there that we are trying to develop, that we are trying to make good use of. We've been able to partner with, uh, the Mississippi, uh, uh, USDA. We've been, uh, blessed to partner with, uh, the congressman there. And things are happening in Lexington. I need to continue to serve on the board so that we can make sure that all of these projects are completed. More than anything else, I just want to give back to the church who has given so much to me from a child, uh, to, uh, from the Sunshine Band, uh, up to the purity class, up to the youth department. And I've served the church. I've been a junior deacon in the church. I was a little deacon in the church. I was a minister, an ordained elder, a pastor, a district superintendent, jurisdictional secretary, and now administrative assistant. So I did not take the elevator in this church. I've taken step by step. You've been praying for me. You've been supporting me. And I've been able to walk in the footsteps that God has provided for me. I need you to trust me. I have the experience. And then you hear me say all of the time, when the game is on the line, the rookies are not always there to help you. But when the game is on the line, the experienced players can see to it that the game is won. Let my experience continue to work for you. It's all about you, the delegates. It's all about the Church of God in Christ. I need your vote. I'm not taking for granted anything. I'm asking for your vote. I'm asking for your prayers. I'm asking for your support. The Lord has blessed us to put together a wonderful campaign team, uh, led by our bishop, Bishop David Houston, who's always been supportive of everything that I've been a part of. It's co-chaired by evangelist Krista Taylor James and Superintendent Prince Bryant II. And we have a great committee. My daughter, Marqueta Richardson, who goes out of her way to make sure her father looks good. And again, she does a lot of things that I take the credit for. But I'm so appreciative to my daughter, to my wife, Laquita, who adds to our campaign team and so many others who are volunteering their time. And I don't want to take that for granted. I want them to know that I thank them and I'm running, I'm running, I'm running so that they will not be embarrassed or that they will not have to hang their heads down. And you, the delegates, can help put me back on the trustee board. I'm praying, I'm believing, and I'm trusting you to allow experience to matter in your life and in this race. Brother Steve, I want to thank you again for this opportunity for allowing me to come on and just share me with, and what you see is what you get. That's all I have. That's all I am. And with your help and with your prayers. Now listen, registration for the election ends on October 21st. That's only a few days away. If you have not registered, go to the ARC system and log in and register. $22.50. And the way they have the election this year, if for some reason you can't make it to Memphis, you can vote online. You can vote virtually. Don't let this opportunity pass you by. And when you are registering to vote in the Church of God in Christ election, if you're going to Memphis, wherever you live, make sure that you vote early in the general election because we have a candidate that we want to make sure is the president of the United States of America. Thank you, Brother Steve.
Amen. Hold, hold, hold. Would you like, would you like to get the lighter fluid for me? I, I tip it to her. Okay. All right. We're back. We're back.
I know I'm not going to hear the end of that.
Superintendent Timmons, you're the best. You're one of my favorite persons in the Church of God in Christ. Alone, period. I'm thank you for what you're doing and what you're going to do in advance. And, uh, and, uh, there's my mom out there commenting. We thank God for each and every one of you who are just behind Superintendent Timmons. Great work, great leadership. You're just doing great things and we appreciate you. And you know, as, as I say, you're the same all the time. You don't change. You don't, you know, you don't get iffy. You don't be like, oh, I'm going to call you back. And you don't call back and, or I get a return call where I get to the convention and say, oh, I'm calling you back now. So, okay, we, that was a month ago. But we appreciate even the things that you have going on in the community with the newspaper and great business ventures that you're doing. You're a great example of great leadership, Superintendent Timmons. Well, it's very evident, he's got the experience. My dear friend Marcus Jeter out there as well. My dear friend, and I want to thank the committee for allowing us to come forth on tonight with this great broadcast. And, uh, share this video. Let's share it. You know, this is not a short video presentation. This is literally, we've been here almost 45 minutes. And you can hear what the superintendent has to say. Uh, anything else you want to share before we go? Mister Superintendent, I got to watch my words. Something else almost slipped out. So.
Cut out your foolishness.
Uh-oh, that's that word. That's where that cuts that word. Who, anything you want to say before we leave them, before we dismiss?
Listen, Brother Steve, it has been a pleasure and a joy of mine to be a part of your broadcast. And I'm just looking at all of the comments from dear friends, from members, from associates, from all over. Thank you for being a part of this, uh, broadcast tonight. And again, I don't, I don't know all the ins and, and, and outs about it, but I like it and share it and look at it again and, and direct other people to, uh, uh, Brother Steve Live. And he has some more goodies that you can be a part of, not just during the election, but throughout the year, some, yeah, some other stuff that if, if you go to his website, you'll be able to see that. But I want to thank you again for tuning in. And I hope, I hope, I hope, I hope that you heard me. I hope that you heard my heart. And I hope that you will vote for Timmons for trustee. And if you're watching and you're not able to vote and you know people who are delegates, speak to them on my behalf and let them know that a vote for Timmons will not be a vote in vain. Thank you again, Brother, uh, uh, Steve. And again, as you already mentioned, my whole campaign is a celebration in the memory of evangelist Joyce Rogers. This is the first campaign I've ever had. She was not physically present, but let me tell you something. She left her mark with Crystal and Marqueta and they act just like Joyce.
Stop your foolishness.
And they ball say, they ball just like us. So, oh, I guess she is with us. Thank you, man. Thank you for, uh, allowing us to come on tonight. We appreciate all that you do.
We've got some more great guests coming up later on our broadcast tonight. Superintendent Timmons, Timmons, stay on the line. From Hollywood, California, Brother Steve, have a great rest of the evening.